I'd like to call the county commissioner a regular meeting to order for November the 18th, 2024, and would like to welcome those in attendance, and would ask that Commissioner Scott Eifert lead us in vacation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we pray tonight, you know, as we're entering the Thanksgiving season, you know, we have so much to be thankful for, even as Peter's pouring his water over here. You know, I keep reading stories and listening to stories about, you know, what's going on in the western end of the state, and there's a lot of people that just now got their water back. And, you know, we just, we have so much again to be thankful for, and I don't want to take anything for granted during the holiday season. In the Bible, it tells us to be thankful, and, you know, we should be. So, remember the folks in the western end. I know there was a big push right after the storm, and people were donating stuff and doing stuff, and that's great, but let's continue to do that. I mean, a lot of those folks are still living in tents, and, you know, the government can only do so much, and it's up to us sometimes to step in. So, remember those as we pray. Our grace heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day, and thank you, Lord, for the privilege and honor it is to be here tonight. Lord, we continue to pray for all the ones in the western end of the state that are going through such hardships, while we pray for all the assist people that are helping them, the power folks, all the communications, or just lift them up, keep them safe, Lord. Lord, we pray as we're entering the Thanksgiving season, Lord, to be thankful for what we have, and not to take anything for granted. Lord, I pray so much for our police, our fire, EMS, or that protective service daily. And, Lord, with the country and the world like it is today, with wars and rumors of wars, Lord, I just pray that you'll just keep our military safe and their families safe, and thank you so much for what they do, you know, for this country. And, Lord, we just be with this board as we make decisions for the county, and all these things, asking your precious name that we pray. Amen. Y'all would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. I'd ask all the commissioners to look over the agenda, and will there be any adjustments to the agenda? If not, I would seek approval of the agenda.
I make a motion when you approve the agenda.
Commissioner Ashudo made the motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hatley has a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. The first thing on our agenda is public comments, and we do have Michael Lanier who was gonna come up and talk about duck hunting within 50 yards of houses. And, Mr. Lanier, if you would come forward, and while you're coming forward, I wanna make a, I want to thank Peter Ashudo, because about, I don't know, two years ago, public comments used to be at the very end of our agenda. And Peter asked me, what do you think about putting public comments first? That way, if somebody wants to say something, they can, but they don't have to sit through the whole thing. So, that was a good suggestion, Peter, and I appreciate you suggesting that, because I think it's worked out well. Mr. Lanier?
Thank you. I do want to start, I know I've only got three minutes. We came through Swananoa yesterday on the way home from Bryson City, and first thing I thought, other than what you see there, is that river running through there is not really much wider than the creek you see running through Albemarle. And that just really hit hard. When they weren't expecting it, we wouldn't, I mean, I know we don't have that type of water pressure coming down the line, but you never know. So, thank you for your time. This comes about, it's not that we have duck hunters in our cove. We live in River Haven, just inside. I'm in the first cove before you get to the bridge heading south in River Haven. Our cove, its widest point is about 80 yards, and that is the widest point. When the hunters come in, they're down where it's only maybe 20 yards wide, which means that if they're in the middle, they're 10 feet from, or 10 yards from anybody's dock. When they're firing, I do realize that birdshot at a 45-degree angle, it is said that it can travel 250 yards. And wildlife, I have talked to them, this is the third year in a row, wildlife says it's the county's problem. The county says it's wildlife's problem, and I understand in talking with Ms. Crump that y'all have run into that same circle too. I'm not trying to stop duck hunting. While I'd like to, I've gone that avenue, I raise ducks, but the real issue here is the fact that they're so close to our homes. If you're hunting deer, you can't shoot a deer within 150 yards of a house, but they say you can fire a gun at a duck with no limited area because of their possible flight patterns. And I'm just looking, in a cove as narrow as ours, I'm just looking to see if there's something that could possibly be done to limit it in those areas, or in this case, I'd say prohibit it in areas that are that close, especially with the expanse of houses being built along the shoreline of the lake. I've got three letters from different people in our community that were outside or have been outside at times that this has taken place. And while we didn't know at the time, some of them have hollered at them, found out that we can't do that, that's hunter harassment. But we've got, even in our cove, I've got, I've actually got an autistic niece that lives there, and every time something like that happens and goes off, it's potentially traumatizing. I mean, it's just not something that you hear every day up in there. If out in the lake, I mean, again, I understand they're gonna hunt, but when you're getting confined into a space that tight, you don't know what's gonna happen, you don't know which way it's gonna go. Families don't even want to be outside in the morning during duck season, especially on the weekends, just because you don't know whether it's a fishing boat or a hunting boat until that first blast goes off. And that's why I'm here, that's all I've got. I mean, it's really that short and sweet.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Andy, have we ever had wildlife here come do any presentation?
I've spoken to wildlife. They're, duck hunting on public water, bayed lake, it's a public water, it's a public resource, and so it'd be no different than somebody putting a boat in that cove and fishing under somebody's dock. I mean, you can't restrict somebody, you know, from fishing under somebody else's dock. It's public water, and they're able to do that. So, so there's no restriction on the distance from occupied dwelling with duck hunting since you're on. But now, they can't be above the high watermark, and so, you know, because at that point, now they're on private property. So, they have to be in the water, and they can't be tied off to private property, so they can't be tied off to a dock either. So, that wildlife could, but wildlife doesn't have any jurisdiction to do anything with these folks. If they're in the water, as long as they're, if ducks are baited, and it's obvious they've been baited, and again, it has to be obvious to the hunter, and it has to be obvious to the wildlife officer that they're baited, then they can also write them in an infraction and investigate for hunting baited ducks. But they, in my conversations with wildlife officers, that's really difficult to prove, because unless you can see the actual horn or something there, it'd be difficult to get them and investigate that and charge them. That's something that a DA is gonna pull up the charge with. There are, so, your options are, you can pass a local ordinance. There are no other counties on the Yadkin PD lakes chain that have ordinances restricting duck hunting. There are two on Lake Norman. Catawba and Mecklenburg County are 500 feet from a resident.
Is that a county?
That's the, and to keep in mind, this is county, and they're enforced by the county and/or municipal law enforcement in Catawba County and Mecklenburg County. On that same lake, Lincoln and Iredell County do not have any restrictions. So, if you're on the lake and you're in Lincoln County, you can, you can hunt, duck hunt anywhere. If you're on the lake and you're in Mecklenburg County, then you, that 500-foot restriction is in place. And so, it varies even on Lake Norman in terms of where you are on the lake as to where you do it. And that's per wildlife. If the county enacts an ordinance, they're not going to enforce it. The only way they'll enforce it is if it goes through a session law through the North Carolina General Assembly. And getting the General Assembly to pass a session law that restricts the number, how close to a resident or dwelling, then they said they would enforce it. But if you just pass an ordinance, you would be relying on our local law enforcement to govern that and to enforce that ordinance. But you could pass it, because Mecklenburg County and Iredell, excuse me, Mecklenburg County and Catawba have them, but, you know, you would be, you would be relying on the sheriff's office in the town of Norwood and others that have boats on the lakes to enforce it, because wildlife would not, unless you got our legislative delegation to do a session law.
So, do we have any type of ordinance now that talks about discharging of a firearm?
You, there are, there are no North Carolina laws that prohibit how close, that as long as you're in the water, you can duck hunt in North Carolina. There's nothing that restricts you of how close you are to a resident.
But we don't have an ordinance?
We do not, no. And no, and no other counties on the Yadkin PD do either. And like I said, on Lake Norman, only two counties of the four that border it have them.
Other than, other than just the hunting part of it, about discharging a firearm, we don't have anything like that?
No. On their, they did, on an occupied dwelling on, for game lands.
And included, there's also any occupied dwelling.
But from your, what?
Are they closer than 500 feet?
You gotta do some conversion for me. I mean, if they're, 10 yards, that's what, that's.
100 feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, where they, this, this last time, they, they were in a 20-yard area in the middle of the lake, so they had 10 yards on each side of them with piers. And our houses sit up, mine does it, but most of the houses are a little bit up higher. And the two things to say to that, I was not gonna go the avenue of the ducks, that's how this all started. But if you were to come into our cove, you'd think that it was a 1980s confetti party. I have got fluorescent baited pet duck signs in yards. I bet there's eight of them that line our cove, per wildlife, who says now that they didn't tell us to do that two years ago, but they did, and that's why they're there. I would have never known to do it. So, it is very obvious from the water on fluorescent paper, and we've just renewed them this year, right before duck season started. I was told now that those signs don't mean anything. So, that is just that. My other, only other statement is, is I understand public water, public water and a fishing hook under my dock, that fishing hook's under my dock, but a loose or a stray pellet has got 250 yards of free room to move in a 30-yard distance on a cove, that's a big difference. So, and I know it's, you were talking, I was stating, I'm sorry, I was speaking in general.
What wildlife officer did you speak with?
I have talked to David Ritzheimer, I have talked to Darrell.
John Howell?
John Howell, that was it. I have talked to Sergeant Enoch, and without going through, let me see, I've actually got them all saved in my contacts.
Sergeant Enoch, the head wildlife officer for this county?
Yes, sir. And he actually.
What'd he tell you?
Darby Enoch, he told me, he told me to call the last one I just mentioned. I knew him just when he was in the position that everybody else is in. I have spoken with Darby, who told me to call John Howell. Ritzheimer went all the way back through saying that it was the sheriff's department issue, and that the signs that he told me to put up didn't mean anything anymore. And I also reached out to Brandon Jones through text. Brandon was the slowest one to get back, he'd been on a vacation. Brandon also came back and told me I needed to speak with John Howell. And John was actually very informative in the way that he handled all this, but it was the same thing, it's what got me into the tailspin of, he said, it's really not us. The sheriff's department is one that sets the ordinance, it basically says you can shoot a gun anywhere you want to, as long as you're doing it safely. And then, when I called the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department said it was wildlife, and that's why I kept going back and ended up speaking to four different wildlife officers, because that's where it always ended up again.
Just, just a real quick comment, that's okay? That's okay? Quick comment?
Yeah, this reminds me of, you know, people just really gotta be careful with their, with their guns and shooting. There was an instance, probably six years ago, where the two guys were target shooting in the backyard, and it went through the woods and killed that guy who was in, outside and in his garage. And they knew who the two shooters were, but they couldn't tell, I think, if memory serves me, they couldn't tell which one actually fired the gun. So, there was no charges, no nothing for that. So, people really need to be really, really, really careful, because those bullets can fly.
Did you have any duck hunters this past weekend?
We were, we were in Bryson City, but no, no, sir, we weren't. I was told that there would be a wildlife officer at my house Saturday morning to monitor. Nobody showed up on security cameras, so that's not to say that they weren't somewhere. I mean, there's lots of it, there was lots of areas in the cove they could have been, but it wasn't at my house. And this is not something that happens every weekend. Two or three times a season, but two or three times a season is getting to be, it didn't happen at all. I've lived in that cove since 2017, and the last three years is the only time that it's ever been an incident. In fact, Mr. Howell's response to me was, and I understand where he's coming from, but he said, this is gonna hurt, but the only reason the hunters are in your cove is because you feed the ducks. And I get that, but the only reason we have ducks, when I moved there in 2017, you didn't see ducks, period. And we bought three ducks from the nesting box in Oakboro, and now there's, on any given day, I've got 45 ducks in my yard. So, and I realize that they're there, and apparently the hunters have figured it out too. And that's why we've got baited signs up.
Any other comments? Thank you for coming and.
Would you like the letters?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the drone video you put on Facebook.
Well, thank you, sir.
I really enjoy looking at it.
Well, and I put up two today. I put up Lake Lure and Chimney Rock and Swananoa from my trip through there, just because, like you were saying, I don't think people need to forget it. We forget too quickly. So, thank y'all.
Number two on the agenda is voluntary agriculture district program application. Presenter is Clint Brooks. Mr. Brooks?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time. We have an application. I'm Clint Brooks, Soil and Water District Director for Stanley County, and I help facilitate the voluntary ag district program here in the county. And that program is a voluntary program that allows landowners slash farmers to be able to voluntary enroll their land into a program that pretty much advertises to community to protect against nuisance and all those things, that this is voluntary, or this is, this is agricultural entity that operates on these, on these lands. So, tonight, we have one application. That is Mr. Kevin Farmer and Christina Perez, and they are off Blakely Drive in Albemarle. And that application has a total of 6.6 total acres that they are requesting to enroll into that voluntary ag district program.
I guess, you ready for some questions?
Yes, sir.
Is there a minimum size of acreage that we can do a VAD on?
So, there's not technically a minimum size. It has to meet bona fide farm requirements. That is how that, that's how it's set up. And so, as long as those applicants meet the bona fide farm minimums, then they can, then enroll into that, that total.
So, are they raising livestock on this six?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct.
What kind may I?
I think they have goats and lambs and pigs.
Just all they've got is the 6.6?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is there another consecutive?
No, no, sir, it's just the 6.6.
Are they in the county or are they in the city?
They're in the county.
County.
Yes, sir.
Not in the city.
No, sir.
Any other questions?
Real quick, a quick recap, what's the pros and cons of coming into the voluntary?
Yes, sir. So, the voluntary ag district, as I said before, it's gonna be more imperative, I guess, this program. And we'll have some presentations that we'd like to present to the commissioners, again, just to sort of revisit what the program is. But most importantly, it allows, you know, neighbor, you know, as development starts to creep in, to be able to allow those landowners who operate a farm to sort of protect themselves against nuisance. And so, how it works is, you know, is listed on GIS. It's also, they have the opportunity to put a sign at their, you know, at their driveway where it's at, to allow those landowners, anybody who's buying, to pretty much publicly display that they are agricultural happening. So, sights, smells, all those things that are associated with agriculture. The cons to it, there's not really many cons. The voluntary, there's two types, there's a voluntary, and then there's an enhanced voluntary. Mostly what we have right now is just the regular voluntary. That allows a landowner to enter into an agreement with the county and the Soil and Water District and the Voluntary Ag District Board, and that can be removed at any time. So, if that individual wants to sell that land or anything, they can pull that off, and it can change its earmarking for someone who decides to buy the farm, if you will. The enhanced has a little bit more binding to it. It has a 10-year sort of attachment to it, so it's more conservation easement-like. So, if someone were to sell it, then they would have to sell it with that listed on the deed for that 10-year period.
Thank you.
Other questions? Don't have any. What's, was the board, what would they like, what would you like to do?
I make a motion that we approve the voluntary agricultural district application for Kevin Farmer and Christina Perez for 6.6 acres, and on the lap number, that's in the, on the paperwork.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Ashudo, second by Vice Chairman Barbie. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Thank you, Clint.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Next, item number three is Stanley Community College Board of Trustees appointment. Presenter is Mr. Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The chairman of the Board of Trustees wrote us a letter early this month, letting us know that Mr. Honey, Mr. Cody Honeycutt, who was elected to be the District 67 House member, has resigned his unexpired term on the Stanley County Community College Board of Trustees effective November 9th. And so, the community college is letting us know that, and has, is seeking an appointment to fill Mr. Honeycutt's unexpired term, which will expire on June 30th, 2027. There are multiple applications in your packet for consideration by the board for, to fill this unexpired term, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of county manager Lucas? Don't have any questions? I think everybody's had time to review the applicants. I'll open the floor for, for an emotion, not, it's not a motion, a nomination for the replacement of Cody Honeycutt to the Stanley Community College Board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Melvin Poole.
Okay, do we have any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Matthew Behringer.
Okay. Melvin Poole, Matthew Behringer, any other nominations? Like a motion to close the nomination?
I make a motion when you close the nominations?
We have a first, Commissioner Ashudo, second, Commissioner Hatley. Any other discussion before we vote? All commissioners have one vote. So, Melvin Poole. Okay, three votes. Mr. Behringer? Okay, three votes. Uh, Mr. Behringer. Four votes. Mr. Behringer will, uh, fill the term of, uh, Cody Honeycutt. Okay, consent agenda. Had time to review the consent agenda. I would like to seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
Commissioner Oshuto. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Aford. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Which brings us down to, um, board comments. And Commissioner Oshuto, I'm gonna start with you, but don't get long-winded because I have a dinner date.
That's okay. I wrote it, I wrote it down. Just wanna say, this is, this is my last meeting as a county commissioner. And I just wanted to say it's been, been a pleasure and just wanna go, you know, on things that I've, I feel I've had an impact and left my fingerprints on in Stanley County. Well, I, I'm the last one that was on the board when we only had five, five people. To remember what it's like with five people. And when I ran, the big news was Alcoa. You know, there was a big fight over the dam. And my campaign was, where's the dam business plan? And I remember when the first day I was sworn in, we were meeting with, we had met with, um, you know, Alcoa with the help of Justin Burr, Josh and Gene, and we had an agreement for, I think it was like $7 million to settle at the time. And then they pulled it off the agenda at the meeting and we had the three Alcoa folks there. So me, and I could be a pain in the you-know-what sometimes. So for the next six months and Andy.
Amen.
I'll remember I did my little Stanley County taximeter. Taximeter or something like that I called it. So every meeting, I read out how much money we had spent on lawyers for that. And we finally, we finally settled with them seven months later. And, um, we got half, half that amount of the seven, $7 million. But that chapter is behind us. But the one, one thing I wanna say with that, that's the way commission, committee should, commissions should work. Cause I was totally on the opposite side of this with Tony Dennis and Lindsey Donovan. And what I admired about them and how we worked together, that, and y'all remember what a fight that was. But Lindsey Donovan, he would come down to Vacandash and talk to me about different things. I remember one of the, the community college board members we appointed. We sat down and we talked about not who we should appoint, but what positions do we need? Do we need someone from industry? Do we need someone from that? And I remember I called someone out of pre-form lines and he was just too busy and, um, the group, we end up voting for somebody we did not know because they came recommended from someone else and had a good resume. So it wasn't just fill, it was filling the person there. And Tony, I would meet Tony, we'd down at Hinks Grill for breakfast in the morning and people would ask him, they said, Tony, how can you eat with Peter? He's against you with Alcoa. He said, man, the man, the man did what he said he was gonna do when he ran for office, you know, so how can you fault someone for that? And he was a, you know, Tony was the one that had my back when we looked to expand the, expand the, um, the ag, the ag center. I remember first going out to the ag center, you had that funny, funny lobby. And Tony was with me on that. It took me like, I think, three budgets, Andy, to get that, to get that in. And I never forget, Andy goes, we got like $300,000 left. You wanna reduce some taxes or what you wanna do with it? And it was my last meeting. It's like, maybe it was a going away gift for me. It was like $125,000 to remodel that and they voted to remodel that. And that's been, that lobby can be used so many different ways right now. And I still like y'all at one point to get that, with me being gone, when you go outside that, that concrete area back there, if something could be done with some overhang or some coverage out there, that would really expand the use out there. I don't wanna be hurt there, hurting up there. Animal control, that's another one. When I first came on, the health department was separate from the.
Commissioner Oshuto, you were beyond three minutes.
I know.
I know. This is your last meeting, so we're gonna give you a little leeway.
I know, I know. So I'm gonna wrap it up. But, but I think this stuff's important to know how things are gone. Things happened and how they worked. We had the, animal control was, was separate. I mean, health department was separate from DSS at the time. And there was a lot of dog bites back in the day. So it was dead in the water and I kept bringing it up. And then Lindsey got involved with it. And Lindsey, he was a good detail person. And we met a few times and went on and on. And then I remember sitting here and at the last minute, Lindsey made a change on it there. And it was something to do with the acreage. I remember looking at Dennis Joyner and Andy, it's like, you know, that's gonna make this thing a lot better. So it was good there. Um, and for years I constantly worked in various departments and how we could, of how we could better our government. And I encourage folks to do that because I know y'all been around, Patty and, um, Brandon, that when y'all came on board, y'all went down to the different departments. And you learn, you learn a lot doing that. And then I also went around to the different council meetings. In two ways that benefited with the council, going around to the different council meeting was one, is that's how I helped come up with the idea for the Parks and Rec, you know, the Parks and Rec Grant Program. And secondly, I was off the board at the time, but remember when Bill, you were on the board then and it wasn't you, it was the last minute. They come up with this plan to change the way the sales tax was gonna be distributed. Remember that? And that was gonna, that was gonna just destroy some of these municipalities. And it was like, man. That was there. And then, um, last thing, when the microburst came, we had the microburst came. There was no communication for a few days, except people were, I'm hurrying. People were, people, the only way people could communicate was with, through Facebook a lot of times to see what was going on. I said to Andy, I suggested to Andy that we had the Stanley County Emergency Management Page and we came up with that. And that's got 5,000 to 10,000 people on now to help in situations like that. And then, um, the big one was, uh, election change. The election change we had, uh, when, when Senate Bill 411 came around and they changed the election cycle to 5-2. The 4-3 split was always better. It took years. I think we had to wait six years. So you guys voted on that. And then, um, that, to switch that to 4-3. And I do compromise. I mean, I had wanted it to go to district voting, but that, that wasn't gonna pass. Then quickly, just wanna make a quick thank yous to you guys. I appreciate working with y'all. I wanna give a quick thank you to, to Bill and Mike for the work we did with the Board of Education. I'm not even gonna go into that. That is my one big, all I'm gonna say is my one biggest disappointment as a county commissioner is my failure is to help get better facilities for the schools. That is a huge failure that I did on that. Um, then a real quick couple of shout-outs. I'd say to Tony Dennis and, and Lindsey for their constant work. And, um, Scott, Scott keeps asking me if I'm still gonna call him. I keep saying yes. I think, ask me one more time and I'll say no and he'll probably quit. He's waiting for me to say no to him there. Trent, I'm gonna miss your phone calls, man. Trent, that man gets very passionate with his, with what you believe. And I really, really, really appreciate the conversations and stuff. And I do wanna give a shout out to, um, to Jan Lauter. I remember sitting up here with Jan and Jan was always very good about, um, saying, this is how I'm gonna vote and this is why I'm gonna do it. She was very good explaining that. I got more, but I know everyone's, wants to leave and be home. So do I.
I've got a dinner date. Peter, I, I have a dinner date. No joke. Thank you. Yeah. Brandon? Okay, Scott?
Just one quick, you know, Peter, we've, we've agreed on things and we've disagreed, but we've agreed to disagree. And I, I appreciate you and I know all your work with each department. Uh, I, I, I think the people in those departments really appreciate you being there. So thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Vice Chairman Barbie?
Peter, I, I have enjoyed working with you. We, we, like you say, we disagree some and we agree some. So I've enjoyed working with you and I appreciate the time that you put into the school project. You did a good job on it. And have a good Thanksgiving and a happy birthday.
Yeah. Commissioner Hatley?
I'm just saying, me and Peter probably disagree more, more than we agree, but we would, we would always look at each other's side and talk about it. Try to work through things and, uh, happy birthday.
Commissioner Crump?
Well, I would say, uh, Peter and I usually don't see eye to eye, but we have started to find glimmers of hope, haven't we, Peter? There's always a silver lining. Um, and, and also I wouldn't take this away from you at all. You're very passionate and I appreciate your commitment to this county and your beliefs. And it, it's hard job, you know, being a commi- a commissioner, really is. You have some hard days. And I appreciate sacrifices. Um, I do wanna say one thing, um, just, I thank, uh, Mr. Lanier for coming and speaking. He did talk to me some this week and I tried to find some answers for him. I, I want him to know that, um, his comments did not fall on deaf ears and we will certainly read those letters. Um, there are a couple of things we could do. Yes, we could vote on a resolution that would need to pass as a session law. That sounds very lengthy. Um, there's, we could also pass a local ordinance that then the sheriff and his people would have to enforce. And I don't know if that is the best thing to do. I think that we would have to involve the sheriff on that conversation as well. So, um, you've given us something to think about. Certainly not the same thing as putting a fishing pole in, in, in fishing around somebody's dock when you're firing, um, bullets around someone's house. It is different. And in, with all due respect to the hunters out there, I live with two of them, so I don't wanna dig my hole too deeply, but we, we definitely need some parameters, in my opinion.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Oshuto, I'm gonna ask that you come down here, stand next to me, please.
Stay right there. Six. Six feet. You remember COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah. Stay right, come right here.
This true story.
No, whoa, you're getting too close to me. Peter was very passionate about social distancing and about wearing masks. And this being your 66th birthday. And I've seen some of the masks you wore. Sometimes he wore them as a chin strap. Other times he wore them below the nose, which is not proper. You're supposed to cover your nose and your mouth. True story. Lincoln Day dinner. When was the height of COVID? 2022? Yeah.
No, it was 2020.
2020, 2021, somewhere. Scott Eford, Tracy Eford, Gail Alhan, Bill Alhan, and Peter Oshuto sitting at the same table. Peter has his mask on. And I'm thinking to myself, how in the world is he gonna be able to eat this barbecue? Well, he managed because he kinda used it as a chin strap. And then they had ice cream. You remember that ice cream?
How the heck do you not?
Man, he had ice cream all over his mask. So Peter, for your 66th birthday, I'm giving you some brand new clean mask.
Thank you.
Yep. There you go. Just keep your distance though.
Y'all have been to closed session. You know where I sit in the closed session.
You and I have disagreed, but kinda like Scott and the rest of the commissioners, we've agreed to disagree. You, you've done some good recommendations through your eight years as a commissioner. And, uh, I, I think I've served six of those years.
Yes.
With, with you for the eight. In all seriousness, I wanna present you with this plaque that says, "In appreciation for your leadership, integrity, and generosity to the citizens of Stanley County as a member of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, December 7, 2020 through December 2nd, 2024." You've probably got a plaque like this already. I'm close to it. Presented the 18th day, your birthday of 2024. Congratulations. If you want other committees, y'all come down here and we'll get a picture with Peter. We're gonna have Peter stand six feet in front of us. Now, Charles, you need to put some of this in the newspaper. Oh, man.
And notice the table we were sitting at was farther away than the, remember that? We were at the, we were at the fringe.
Gail said to me when we got home, did you see Peter eating that ice cream with that mask?
That's right, that's right, that's right. Cause it was a religious mask. It was holy and it could eat right through us. You're fine. Okay. Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations. Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Okay, that's all we have for this evening and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, we got a motion from Commissioner Oshuto and a second from Commissioner Crump. All in flavor, fa- flavor, yeah, favor. Please say aye.
Aye.